Yeah.
Who's that? Who you talking? Oh, she did. Secretary of Interior? That's what I had thought. Oh, it's nine o'clock. Okay, everybody turn your things. It's nine o'clock and we're gonna call the meeting to order of the Cottington County Commissioners. If you'd please rise, I'll have Commissioner Gable lead us in a pledge of leasings.
A pledge of leasings to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay. Item two is a call for public comment. If someone would like to make a public comment, they can do so in person or they could use the telephone number six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. And if you have a cellphone, we'd appreciate if you'd silence it. And if you need to take a call, we would like you to do that in the hallway. Thank you. Number three, is there any conflict of interest?
No.
Okay. Item four, we need a motion to approve the November twelfth agenda.
Still moved.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number five, we need a motion to approve the November seventh minutes.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Is there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, number six, discussion possible action for additional rate funding with Pelican Township Officers. If you gentlemen want to come up and turn a microphone on, just come up, Greg.
Morning.
And just tell us your name and what we're talking about.
You're live and on camera. I don't know if CBS or NBC, but.
This or unknown.
Yeah, yep, yep, you're good.
Greg Van Teed from Pelican Township.
Josh Mickelson from Pelican Township.
We're here to discuss the, the road improvement plan that the state has, and it's an eighty twenty percent paved, so it's really a good deal for the townships. Anyway, the culverts that we did this year, we had estimated sixty nine thousand dollars. And we had bought the culverts for nineteen four forty nine. And we got the bill for having it all done, and it was fifty five thousand. So we've had seventy four thousand five hundred and eighty four dollars and ninety eight cents in this. And so we were wondering if it would be possible to get the, the eighty twenty split on the five thousand five hundred and eighty four dollars and forty eight cents. The, the road. Yes, I don't know how to explain. It got a little higher than, than what we thought it was gonna be, I guess, and the culverts are at the same level that the box culvert was. But I, I guess I don't, not aware of the difference where it actually comes from. And anyway, there is a good quality job done on this project. Deutschx rating did a very good job. But anyway, it has turned out to be fifty five hundred and eighty four dollars higher. We were wondering if we'd be able to get some help with that. If that could go under that eighty twenty split.
I'd make a motion to approve that. So, so to cover eighty percent of the, with rate, rate funding to cover eighty percent of the fifty five eighty four forty eight cents.
Van Duzen was second.
Okay. Yes.
My question would be, can we, can we amend? Do we have to start off with a new motion or what's the procedure to do it legally?
I would say you would need a new motion because you approved, you know, up to the sixty nine thousand. So to make it clean, I'd say the new motion in second to approve this additional amount, eighty twenty split.
So, yeah, I think I had some, I just wanted to make the motion, get it on the table. It makes sense. We're just continuing with the same project. It's understandable that, you know, sometimes the costs come out a little different than you estimate them. The entire program is still an eighty twenty split. I mean, that's, I think that's okay unless there's something that I'm missing about the rate funding.
No, I would. We have Travis here who's on that board as well. He can let you know, I, in my opinion, but we'll let Travis, maybe if you guys want to get his opinion on that.
Yeah, go ahead, Travis.
So it is, and I, you know, I checked with the, you know, through, right through the bill over the weekend and the lot, and it certainly is up to your discretion. So I think going forward, probably the best thing that the commission probably do is to set a policy to, to, you know, look into that in the future, to, you know, future projects that may have this. I mean, if you just set a policy and I would just say that, you know, it's your discretion and that, you know, somebody comes in and they're twice as high type of deal, you know, obviously they didn't do their homework and they didn't get a lot of bid and, but this type of deal that I've worked with, with Danny Deutsch for a lot of years and I know that, you know, he's, he knows his stuff as good as anybody. So, no, that's why I recommend is just, you know, set a policy to go forward in the future that is at your discretion. Project is, is their own project. So, but no, there's nothing within the law that says you can't do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Travis.
So, just to add, Debbie, if you're wondering what the amount would be, I come up with four thousand four hundred and sixty seven dollars and fifty eight cents, what I come up with just on my, technically, that's what eighty percent of that amount is.
Yep.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Donald.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, we'll move down to number seven, with an update from Wayland from Banner on the extension building parking lot project. Assume your position, JT.
Morning.
Good morning. Morning, guys.
Uh, thanks for the, the spot on the agenda this morning. We just wanted to give an update, I guess, on the parking lot project, particularly, obviously, it's right here in town, so visible to the community and county members that use it, certainly with voting day taking place and that being a polling location. I'm sure there was a lot of folks that checked it out at that point in time and, and so wanted to give an update. So first, we did submit a, a application for payment. It was the first application for payment on the project. It, it did withhold retainage until completion and so it, it appears that the project is going to come pretty close to the, the bid contract price with what's been paid on that plus what's retained. So, a few items that I wanted to touch base on, in the contract, the contracted substantial completion date was October fifteenth of twenty twenty four. The contractor had requested five additional days of work for the building skirting change order that was discussed and added to the project back at a commission meeting in late September, I think it was. The, the final completion, so I'm sorry, substantial completion is deemed achieved when the lot is available for its intended use, which was determined to be October twenty fourth. That's when they finished the paving of the lot. We did perform a walkthrough, compile the punch list, and the contractor's been working, working on that punch list since that time. Final completion was contracted to be November first. Again, we would add that additional five days onto that final completion date, so that would move that to November sixth, but they have not yet achieved final completion on the project. The punch list items haven't been completed. We've been and, and will continue to be in correspondence with the contractor until that's completed. There are, there are potential liquidated damages or penalty for delay associated with those dates. The contractor submitted requests for additional days' extension and Steve and I have visited on it and will provide him a formal response to, to what we believe is fair. With that said, you, you may have noticed that there were, there was some correction, correctionary work being done out there this past week by the contractor. There was some asphalt pavement that that when placed did not allow for the drainage to drain from the, the building entrances down to the valley gutter. So the contractor was back this last Friday. Steve and I were, were out there while they were repairing that correctionary work. There also is some, some punch list items that, that we still believe if they're not completed this year would have to be included in some sort of warranty with a final completion or, or final completion document. Typically, how that works is the contractor has a performance bond on the project, which guarantees their work. And so the contractor or the, the contractor would have to hold that performance bond until the warranty work is complete. Some of that is tied to some asphalt pavement that's a lip above the, the concrete, not allowing drainage and, and some other concrete work. Outside of that, we are working with contractor to reconcile the final quantities and, and carry out the final punch list items and are hopeful that the next time I provide an update, it'll be for a final payment, a final completion document with any warranty items associated and, and project closeout. So I, I thought it was worthy to provide an update, knowing that most of you probably have been out there or seen the lot recently, so.
Awesome. It'll be all completed, so like with the thaw in the spring and everything will be good for water getting away.
Yes, yep. Yep, so, a- and I guess that's where, that's where we say any, anything that's associated with, i- if something arises. So, so there's a one-year defective work correctionary period as part of the county's contract with the contractor that if there's a bird bath in the spring, that's within the one year of substantial completion and they would be required to to correct that. And if they chose not to, then the county has the right to, to reach out to their bonding company that, that provide the bond for their performance on the project, so. And, and that's, that's not anything that hasn't been done before, I guess, on, on projects, so. But otherwise, yeah, unfortunate that there's a patch in the new parking lot. And it's, it's frustrating, I'm sure, to the county and frustrating to, to all involved with the project. But, but it was holding water and needed to be corrected.
Yeah, not much can be done about that.
Well, it does drain upstairs.
Yep.
And there wouldn't have been a, without that repair. The asphalt concrete being lower than the asphalt would have built up over course of time. I think you're right.
Right.
The bottom line is, is that's why we hire and pay through the nose. No, that's not. Through engineering studies and, and so when we sit at a table just like this right now, we know that we are covered. And that there'll be a, a follow-up and it'll be done right officially. So thank you, Wayland, and your company.
Yeah, I'd have to thank Wayland too. There's a lot of stuff on this project and so that, that it would have been way more than I would have been out looking and seeing, so thanks to them.
Great. It's a difficult time, I'd argue, that big slight variation in compaction that you're gonna get some.
Yeah, no, parking lots are very challenging, especially asphalt parking lots.
When you got the asphalt and the concrete working together, it's more difficult. Looking pretty decent.
Okay, let's move down to number eight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Discussion possible action to authorize chair to sign a contract for engineering services with Banner for that structure number fifteen dash one fifty nine dash zero 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 riprap repair plans.
I'll give you both of them, but or you, sorry. So here are a few pictures from the bridge inspection report and, and I spoke with Mark this morning to, to kind of run through what he had been proposing to the highway department for some, some preservation work, maintenance work on this bridge. And Lynn pulled those pictures. You can see they're, they're detailed out as far as the east back wall and then west back wall. And you can see some of the erosion taking place in front of those back walls. Mark's recommendation is to install riprap erosion protection along those back walls because as, as time goes on, that erosion is gonna continue and it's gonna continue to impact the ability for those abutments to carry their intended, or serve their intended purpose for carrying the bridge and then, of course, carrying loadings. I believe the highway department performed some interim maintenance.
We did a few weeks ago, we went out and the guys set up concrete forms and poured some concrete. So it would flow underneath the existing concrete to shore it up. But Mark's recommending that we get it rip wrapped if we can yet this winter.
And so the, I think the item on the agenda is technically is Banner's contract for putting together some specifications and plan documents and then overseeing some of the construction efforts to rip rap that, those abutments. Now, the east abutment is, is more in need of the protection than the west abutment presently. But the reality is, is the west abutment, we'll get to that point where it would likely need rip rap protection as well. So being able to do them both at the same time would be the most economical way to approach it. There are some ways where in order to perform the project in a more expeditious manner and, and potentially, I don't want to say avoid bidding it, but, but release your obligation to bid the project would be for the county to potentially purchase and supply the rip rap and/or even supply the trucking of the rip rap to the site. And then the, the county would be able to reach out to contractors and solicit quotes for the work to be done. And, and if those, if those quotes fall underneath of the, the required state bid law dollar values, then you could select a contractor that way rather than advertising for two weeks and, and putting together contracts and that sort of stuff.
Is that something that you'd be able to do?
Yes, yep. And we would have the money in our repair budget to do this if we did it yet this year.
What's, what's the, is there an estimate looking at the engineering?
Sure, so the, the engineering is, is, is a fifteen thousand dollar, not to exceed contract. That would be for the, for the plans and specifications. It's near the bottom and then, right, and then the construction estimate, yeah, all in. And these are somewhat ballparks because it depends a little on contractor availability and stuff like that. But, but for, for the east abutment, you know, between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars for the west abutment, you'd just double that because it's the same footprint. Now, that would be including materials, county labor and contractor labor. So if the county were able to furnish the materials and, and haul and the contractor's labor was, was placement, then there could be some savings associated with that as well, so.
When you want to get this done this fall, it's kind of a weather.
Um.
All the water.
So, the, the water is down and it's prior to potential, you know, spring thaw and, and water than creating additional erosion in the spring. So it, it really is work that can be done as long as you can remove remove material. So, you know, even really when the, the ground is frozen, you, you can get to a point as long as it's not February. But certainly, if you were going to, to move forward with something, to have it prepared so that way, when water starts flowing a little higher in the springtime, that protection is in place. And I think that's where the discussion of the, the maintenance, the maintenance costs associated with it fall within the county highways department's budget and and could be completed in short order.
Is this in the budget?
We have money in our repair budget. And just a ballpark, what's that number? It's gonna go east and left side.
Yeah, so, again, the fifty to a hundred thousand for each side. And, and some of that. Yeah. I, I, I realize that. And, and I guess, you know, admittedly, it's, it would be assumed that it's not going to get any better, right? And so if, if, if the documents were prepared to solicit quotes or bids today and the bid was at a point that it was beyond what the county was comfortable spending, you know, there's always the opportunity, I guess, to push that out and try to bid it at another time. But, but the condition of the grade around the abutments will only deteriorate. It won't, it won't improve unless it's, you know, unless it's determined that the county can, can perform that maintenance with their forces and then that. You, you still likely would want a plan, but you wouldn't need to, to bid it or quote it out, so.
And we're not really equipped to do it. And if we have a contractor do it, they're gonna be insured. If they hit a girder under that bridge, that's on them.
You, have you made any contacts with any contractors? So?
No, no, we just initially talked with Mark about this. We, we went out, the repair that we did was Mark's recommendation for, for now. And now he's suggesting that we go out there and show it up with a rip wrap.
Motion by Gable. Second by Waterman to approve this. Have the chair sign this contract for the engineering services with Banner. Any other questions?
I think he summed it up. It's not gonna get any better. Only gonna get worse.
And with our deterioration of our bridges in our county, the more we can do of this type of thing, maybe it's gonna prolong keeping these bridges in better shape. So we don't, you know, we're already behind the eight ball, so.
Other than that, this bridge is in good shape.
So we can be proactive. Let's fix what we can fix when we know we need to fix it. So, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayland.
Yeah, why don't you just?
Yeah.
For that, that's fine.
Let's just skip down to number ten. Discussion possible action to approve a quote for two-stage jack for highway department.
So at our last safety meeting, this week, I passed around some quotes for jacks for the shop. I did go to Stuart at Napa and he found us one. This one's about a thousand dollars less than the one that I shared with Myron and Troy at the meeting. I guess just looking for approval to purchase them.
Vote approved.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen.
Let's do the work on this.
There any other discussion on this?
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Lynn, did you get your, your skid steer?
It's supposed to come this week.
Okay, good. Can't wait.
Okay, let's back up to monthly reports. We'll start out with Brenda, with the auditor.
All right, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I would like to express thanks to all my office staff, maintenance staff, staff from other offices, or the precinct workers for the twenty twenty four general election. It went very smoothly and without the efforts of all those individuals, that just wouldn't happen. So appreciate all of that. And also the Boy Scout Troop Eight, who also assisted in carrying up the election supplies to the auditor's office that night. That is also very nice for them to do. And I'll just mention their names. I do have those. It's Hannah. I gotta say it right, Bart, Bartow. I think. Marky Collenberg, Lila Cotrude, Cantrude. It's just hard to read some of these. Bentley, Cantrude, Braden Fisk, and then there were four adults who actually was also great to have their guidance with these kids. Kathy Bartow, Chris Bartow, Kirsten Fisk, and Sarah Cantrude. So deep appreciation for all of those people and efforts that they did that day.
That's fair. In the past, we've always awarded them a monetary award. And what, what is that? Do you remember?
No, but I'll find out. I didn't, yeah.
Does it, does it Boy Scout, Girl Scout Troop is what it is?
Yeah, it's the boy, it's a Troop Eight is what is on here, just Troop Eight. So I don't know what they call it now, but it's just Scouts Troop Eight. I'll find that out for sure, but it just says Troop Number Eight.
It's like, it's always fifty dollars or something like that.
I'll go back and look in the records and see. Yep, and then if it is.
See us do that again, because we appreciate their help.
Oh, absolutely. That is wonderful that they were down there and they brought everything up so the ladies just could leave their things off and go, so they didn't have to try to carry all those heavy boxes up. Nope, it was right, great. And I'll check that, check into that. Other than that, office continues working on levies, processing property tax levies for payable twenty twenty five, along with our regular monthly duties and year-end procedures and just catching up.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, she's not here. Yep.
Come on up, Sarah.
Hi, Sarah.
Good morning.
See Shauna.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, good morning. Okay.
Good morning.
Our office continues to be busy. I was putting my report together. I thought I don't have much to report on and then I started looking at the calendar. So, numbers stay high with the number of individuals served and the services that we're providing. If you look over on the right-hand side for the numbers for the year, you can see that we're really growing. Part of this is that we finally are using our software as we should, but it's, it also does accurately reflect that we've increased the number of clients that we're seeing as well. On the backside is more broken down information. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions about any of that? Um we did have a couple more funerals this month and so, but we're still well within budget, we're we're at seventeen thousand for the year, so that's well within the budget. For that, so. Um if there's no other questions, I'll keep going. For CARES ERA, Carrie submitted for the South Dakota CARES fund that and received three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in administrative fees for her work with that program. For our community health worker impact program, we've received or we billed for two thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars for their services in October. Really, that's what we focused on in the past, or what what we've really been focusing on is that sustainability for the community health workers, what we can do to help make sure that they stay and so, or that we can be self-funded, so that we're not using county funds for that. So with that, um we have um obviously are looking at the how we can increase the Medicaid reimbursement and have had some conversations. We also had a conversation with Quick Care here, with the administration at Quick Care and um kind of developed an informal partnership that they will take our clients that don't have a primary care provider, so that we can get them on Medicaid and get them seen more quickly and then get the medical order so that we can bill Medicaid for that, and so that's a nice partnership.
Yeah, can I add to that? Just to explain, so when Sarah receives these Medicaid payments, it goes into the county general because she has to budget for her individuals, obviously, you can't just leave that open. But it does backfill the general fund, so we can't put it into your budget per se, but it does go back into the general. Because you have to budget for those individuals, so it's kind of, you know, it'd be nice to be able to put it in back into her budget, but it's just something that isn't allowed since it's a budget item, so anyway. But it still counts, I mean, all the money accounts and goes into the general fund, so it helps overall.
Yeah, so it just doesn't reflect it on my actual budget, but but it's coming in, so I just keep track and let you know what we're bringing in. Um there's also a grant that um we were eligible for that is on the agenda too, and I'll explain that more when we get to that agenda item. For the reaching rural work that we're doing, and that is the work with the justice impacted individuals who are um have substance use disorder, we are hoping to hear soon about the one million dollar grant that we applied for. Um our coaches through that have said it should hopefully be within the next couple of weeks, that crush your fingers.
That'd be awesome.
I know, wouldn't that be amazing? Yeah, it would be really amazing. Also, with that, we're applying for the implementation funding, which is also on the agenda for today. That implementation funding is just, um you know, when we applied for the grant, there wasn't any associated funding, it was just um team development kind of. This is the result of us doing the work that we needed to do. So this is a one hundred thousand dollar grant for that, and again, it's on the agenda, we'll talk about it more, but that's part, all part of that work that we're doing. The other thing that I have um that I've handed out to you is uh this wealth capitals information, and I I'm just introducing this idea to you. This is from the conference that I went to, the Healthy Wealthy Communities Conference that I went to in Mitchell at the start of the month. It was put on by the Department of Health and Tribal Relations for the state of South Dakota. And they inter- they presented this idea, um this is a program, well, I'm learning more. Again, I'm in just introducing it so that if we start talking about it more. One of the things I've been looking at for when I've been doing this work is how we can bring it all together and what would be a way to make it make sense for our community, there's a lot of, as you know, there's a lot of different things that are happening. And this rural health framework um or wealthy communities framework is a a model that we could potentially do that with, it is in what Wellmark Insurance has piloted it in a couple of communities in Iowa, and they're looking to expand to South Dakota, and so we're starting to have some conversations about potentially being one of those expanding communities to South Dakota for this model. And what it does is it really takes all of these different um areas and brings them together and looks at what we're doing well and what areas we need to grow in, so again, it's just a way to bring together all of the work that has been happening um with some other potential funding options for our community as well, so. Um Wellmark, I don't know if you're familiar with Wellmark, but they used to do like large grants, like fund community centers or things like that, they've gone away from that and they're really looking at larger, more impactful funding options. And so things like this where it's an entire community-focused program, Wellmark, yeah, insurance. Yeah. Yep, so they did that, so some conversations that we're having with that. Um as far as the systems of care pieces, we have our inter-agency meeting this week, it's at the state offices this Thursday, and so that'll be a really great overview of all of the things that happen at the state offices, they're hosting that. Our agency of the month this month is the Watertown Area Memory Care and Aging Network, talking about um Alzheimer's and just different things that we can do to support them. The housing summit will be held November twentieth, maximizing excellence is working with Watertown Development Company to do that, and I've been helping um on that planning team for that as well. Myron is planning to attend, so that will be great.
From them saying, who is, there's supposed to be three of us there, and it's me? Then you?
No, I don't know.
Who who, anyone else follow you?
No, it's just you at this point.
I can carry the load.
We do, we wanted to be very, well, a couple of these, we wanted to be very careful not to risk the quorum and then also to spread the load, so. Yeah, so so that's, yeah, no, but if there are, if you're getting things, Commissioner Johnson, please let me know. On that one, um childcare is continuing to move forward, the monastery is having their after four event this Thursday, the fourteenth, and so um everybody is welcome to attend to celebrate the accomplishments and achievements that for um the childcare facility up there. Yeah, um we are working with Watertown Development Company and Klein Visioneering Group on another um potential contracts to address some of the more complicated issues regarding childcare as far as affordability, business engagement and those types of pieces, and so um hopefully we'll have some information on that by next month. The early learner process has really um hit the next stage, and so they have developed a strategic plan and that will be, I'll I'll be, I'll present that to you as we go forward, we're that's what we're gonna use for to run our meetings in the future, is that strategic plan that they've developed. I also wanted to mention the centralized location, I've kind of brought this up a couple of times. This is the idea that we bring social service agencies together in one physical location. There is a group of people that are working on that and have started to identify property, looking at some funding opportunities, um working with some other community members on that piece, and so again, watch for more information as we go forward, but I just didn't want that to fall off the radar, that that's in the process as well. And then um as always, Cuddington Connects has more information on events and information happening in the community. Our um Morgan has done a great job really keeping that updated and managing that website. She's been a real asset to the community, helping with that.
I didn't get the invitation for the housing summit, but I can't, I can't attend.
Oh, okay, yes, yes, I think that was.
You were the other, see, I knew somebody else.
Well, I did, yes. Sorry, yeah, okay, yep, there was a, yeah.
I'll notify him that it's.
It's you, yes, thank you, thank you. Okay.
Any other questions for Sarah? If not, we'll move down to uh eleven, discussion, possible action to authorize community service uh office to apply for this reaching rural implementation funding grant.
Okay. And like I mentioned, this is just a result of the work, the grant that we had received last year. This is the funding that was associated if we did the work and we have, um our team has come together really well to do this work. Again, just as a reminder of who is on that team, um myself, obviously, Judge Carmen Means, Carrie Johnston with the Human Service Agency, um Monica Everson, the Director of Emergency Services at the hospital, Alexis Spicy, the Mental Health Resource Officer, um Commissioner Gable and Stacy Hendricks with Brothers and Sisters Behind Bars are the seven people engaged with are that are on the facilitating team for this. So we've come together, we're and we're asking permission to apply for that implementation funding. The funding will look at a position to help coordinate this work going forward.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable, uh any further discussion?
Good, so what what's the date, we need to submit that again?
Um that, well, so our coaches are having us submit stuff, like early planning. The actual grant is submitted December, I think fifteenth, but but we have deadlines for the coaches before that.
So they're reviewing that before?
Yep. And yeah.
Good.
Yeah. Yep.
Any any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, number twelve, discussion possible action to authorize community service office to apply for Department of Health overdose data to action. You want to explain that?
Yeah, so first I made a mistake, and so I um am gonna own this one, I apologize. This is um a grant that is only eligible for organizations that have community health workers. It came out at the beginning of October when I was in the thick of a whole bunch of things. I reviewed it really quickly, and when I first reviewed it, it looked like there needed um a lot of a heavy Narcan component, and I wasn't interested in expanding another project in our office, and I also know that there's some other organizations doing Narcan. So I just kind of set it to the side and then realized two days before it was due, Carrie from our office brought it back to me and she said, are you gonna apply for that grant? And I was like, I don't, we don't need more work. And then she said, it's what we're already doing, and so I reviewed it and looked at it again and realized that Narcan is one component of it, but then the rest of it is that we can get fifteen thousand dollars each for each of our community health workers without changing any of the programming that we're doing. And so I talked to Commissioner Johnson, um it so the the short story of that is the deadline was October thirty-first, so I had to submit it. I can call them and re and have it polled. Um if if the commissioners would prefer that I don't apply for it, but I didn't want to miss the deadline because I didn't because I missed the deadline for the meeting.
And I'll tie mine in, she explained all this to me, and I said, I'll take the heat with you if there's any heat to be taken. I said, get it in. I mean, uh this is a grant, didn't cost us any money and fifteen thousand dollars per worker. That'll help. So uh Sarah doesn't have to take all the heat, I told her to proceed.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Johnson, any further discussion?
We have not received it yet, we should here by the end of the month if we receive it.
So how do we apply heat for the discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, have a great day.
Okay, moving down to uh number thirteen, action to approve auditor's account with treasure and note registered, these monthly fees.
Okay, you have those documents in your packets, um the one that says auditor's account with the treasure, it has what our assets on hand, the last business day of October and um checking, it has the general ledger cash balances to our custodial, schools, township, cities and towns, uh total gen- general ledger cash, at the end of the day. Your other one is just what the account was at the end of the day, all the cash and coin and everything that was accounted for. And then the monthly registered deeds fees is for the month of October was forty-one thousand two ninety-three oh five.
Vote approved.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable, um any more question? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number fourteen, we're gonna move till next week. We have that mostly ready, we're just gonna get it done next week, so we're moving that, so we're it's it's encouraging all the work that's been done, so thank you, Natalie.
Got a few more eyes to dot and feet to cross, right?
Number fifteen, discussion possible action to set closing date for accepting highway superintendent applications for November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. You want to come up and just maybe fill us in what we know so far?
Sure, good morning commissioners.
Morning.
Um so we opened up applications in October, just kind of said, um at that time, we were gonna open until closed, and I think we just need to formally set a closing date, so anybody that's interested has a timeline for when they need to get it in. We've received about handful of applications so far, um and that way those individuals have an idea of a timeline too, so um kind of the thought would be if we close it next Friday, the twenty-second, then we got the Thanksgiving holiday with a couple of days off, but please start interviews maybe that first week in December then, with the goal to have the position filled by the end of the year.
Sounds good, so we need to take action on that?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable, that we uh set the closing date for November twenty-second.
Uh should we talk about a potential interviewing?
Schedule?
Just for
Sure.
My sake, if nobody else is because my calendar kind of gets full.
Yep, let me grab my calendar, so hold on.
Yeah. That'd be you.
You and me.
Yeah.
You and I.
Share the load.
Let's let's vote on the motion that we're closing this the twenty-second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now you can work out the details.
Yeah, so you tell me what days work for you and I'll.
I'll be, I'll have to leave uh the afternoon of the tenth, I'll be gone the eleventh for South Dakota Retirement Board Meeting. So the leavits, wouldn't that be good?
How about you just collect the applications, sort through them and figure out how many people we're gonna interview, and then all three of us between the three of us. We can, we can set a date.
Okay.
Rather than do it during the meeting here.
That works for me.
Okay.
The good part, there are five Tuesdays in December.
But uh
But we won't meet on the last one.
Well, yes, we will actually, that's something we'll discuss, but we won't um the twenty-fourth, because that has been declared a holiday, so we will need to meet the thirty-first, even though it's a fifth Tuesday, we have end of the year stuff to take care of.
That's why we do that.
Push it to the end.
So the big thing is
Before that, though.
People need to know that if you are interested in applying for that highway superintendent, get your application in now, because they close on the twenty-second.
Yes.
Okay.
You can go through job service, it's posted on Indeed, contact me or probably any of you if people have questions as well.
Rush, take note.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Natalie.
Noted.
Okay, uh let's move down to sixteen, action to declare office equipment at the Cuddington County Extension Office surplus to be destroyed.
Right.
Vote approved.
Yeah, it's that hands G LCD monitor.
Yeah, it's an old, old equipment.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Dusen, um any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, uh number seventeen, note the twenty twenty-four general election post-election audit on Friday, November fifteenth at eleven.
Right, I just formally wanted to get it on the agenda, that's just part of the procedures that I need to do, so it was kind of repetition of what we talked about last week, but that is when it would be. Uh so I will pick three individuals, um two needs to be the party of the governor race from the last governor election, which would be two Republicans and one Democrat, who will be part of that.
And that's open to the public too.
Yes, it is open to the public.
Okay, number eighteen, note, office will be closed November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, Thanksgiving Day.
Uh I might add to that, so we did receive and we follow the governor's um what she usually declares for holidays, I'll just briefly mention it now, like we kind of talked about, because I'll have it on a a future agenda. But she has also declared Monday, December twenty-third and Tuesday, December twenty-fourth as administrative leave days, so that's why we will definitely need to meet that last week in December, so you'll get your fifth Tuesday a week early.
Right, Merry Christmas.
Okay, um thank you, uh nineteen.
I just put that on because you took it off.
I just put that on because you took it off, so I just have it on. I don't know if you guys want it or not want it on there anymore.
I think we can take it off for now.
Okay, that's fine.
Thankfully.
Burn ban resolution.
Yeah. All right.
Number twenty, action to approve abatement.
Oh, no abatements.
No abatements.
We do have all of the claims, which you have a packet of those. I don't know if anyone had anything that jumped out at you that was out of the ordinary.
I do.
Okay.
There's Cy and Mike's Highway Service. There's thirteen of those. It did the, did the pipe writers duck or stick or repeat or rap in there?
Well, since Allison is here, maybe Alice would like to come up and explain.
Thirty dollars and it was bang, 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 thirteen times, I think.
Yeah.
What did you do down there?
She did not do it, but anyway.
Get a machine tools repaired.
Yes, um, so this came from a case from twenty nineteen where passing motorist was killed. An individual was subsequently charged with first degree murder and pled out about a year or so ago. In the interim, the vehicle was held in storage. And those are the storage fees. We received notice from an attorney, I don't know, about three weeks ago that they had not been paid. And so that is why it's before you, the case has been settled. The individual is no longer on probation, and so I can't even go back and ask for reimbursement.
Oh, boy. The thing sat for thirteen months, apparently, twelve hundred fifty bucks a month.
Yes. Um, so that's where that bill comes from.
Was it secured storage?
It was. It was secured storage. Um, yeah. Unfortunately, we're kind of stuck with that bill. I did reach out to the AG's office to see if there was anything that we could do with it, and they indicated that there's not. Yeah, that's kind of where we're at. I do have some savings in my budget that I have. I can't remember what section I asked to come out of my budget to pay for that expense, but.
Well, that, no, thank you. I, but I saw that and I thought, there's something.
Yeah, it, it looks fishy and I know I had, I had mentioned it to Brendan in case I wasn't able to make it up here today in case something came up. But that's what occurred on that is that it just didn't get requested as restitution.
Thank you.
I hope Cy and Mike said, nice, thank you.
So I don't know if there's any others that jump out at you, but you have the total amount, the two million, three twenty seven, six twenty nine, fifty five. Um, we do need to add one more. Coroner Supplies ended up calling in after this, um, those were printed in the amount of one thousand six hundred eighty three sixty three. So the total amount is two million, three hundred twenty nine thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars and eighteen cents. Uh, state pass through comes to five hundred fifty nine thousand, six hundred eighty two dollars and nine cents. So the amount of actual county claims is one million, seven hundred sixty nine thousand, six hundred thirty one dollars and nine cents.
Big one. Any other? Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number twenty two, is there any automatic budget supplements?
So got caught up on these now with the election being done. The automatic budget supplement to the community service office for the ERA claims, those are the rental payments that she receives payment from the state. And we're going to supplement her budget in the amount of one hundred sixty eight thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars and thirty seven cents.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Gable, second by Van Dusen. Any other question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
No personnel change. There's no travel request.
Okay. We're down to. I want to get a little fudged, like notice, yeah, twenty five. Twenty five, uh, old business. Any old business?
Can I add? So backing up to claims, after our court appointed attorney, once again, the balance in December, we are going to have twenty two thousand, eighty dollars and seventy two cents. We are definitely going to need to supplement that budget. So just a little heads up on that one. I did receive funding from the state of the documents that I had to supply for that. And I don't know if, you know, the legislature acted on to make payments to the counties for claims for court appointed attorneys. I'm waiting to hear back from Rod, how, I mean, it will go into the general. I just don't know if we can supplement it back into the states, into the court appointed attorney budget. Because some of it was prior year and some of it's this year's, but I'm waiting to hear back. But we did receive funding, so I mean, that will go into the general fund. You know, if it's something we have to do a formal budget hearing for at the end of the year, if we don't have enough commissioner contingency, it will be in there, so.
What did you say? We'd have to do the hearing, the supplement for before, was it the CAA?
Yes. Okay. Yes, yep. So waiting to hear back on direction from Rod of how to proceed.
Okay. Number twenty six, any new business?
Mr. Chair, just, uh, since the jail bomb passed, if you allow me to show up, a slide I've been talking to our, it's, I'll get you copies. I got this last night, but it's on. Show it. Showing the wrong picture. Been getting some questions about like, when, when are we going to break ground and those kinds of questions? Um, you know, you know, people, things that people want to know. Um, so I've been talking to Ted Grub, who's our project consultant. That, and then, uh, we've been in contact with the architects and the construction manager. Um, so the architects just, people, sorry, I'll get you guys copies. So obviously I got this last name. So essentially what we're looking at, if you, is a project, a groundbreaking somewhere late, you know, late spring, early summer, you know, June, late June, early July, that, that timeframe. But in the meantime, so what all has to happen is, is, is the, the design work, you know, basically getting, getting the blueprints. One expense that we probably need to get to, this is, it's all encompassed in the soft costs, but, you know, meanwhile, you're, you're working on all the underwriting and bonding, you're getting those bonded dollars, you know, that the voters approved in place, that's going to take several months. So between now and then, that's when we're going to want to use that, that money that we have saved to pay some of those bills along the way. Um, so just, just to kind of give you guys an idea of how that, how it's going to work. And that allows us to get to that groundbreaking, you know, in, in late spring. The, the private, the next expense that would be nice to do before we get, before snow flies anywhere, would be a topographic survey of the site. So that allows, and that would allow the architect to draw, you know, dealing with all the elevations and the length of the course. And so that, that bill we might want to, we'll get next week. So that might be, I don't know, if that's something, depending on the size of it, that, I wonder if we have to think about that. If we do any kind of budget supplements or any kind of, any kind of periods or something like that. But I think it, and it depends on if it fits within commissioners contingency or whatever. But that would be, you know, it's, it's in, it's, it's factored into the overall cost, soft cost, but this would just be a nice thing to do before, before the snow, to be a better survey. So we have, we already did the soil hoardings on that site, so that's one thing that goes out of the way because we looked at that site back in twenty seventeen. So that, so the soil hoardings are done, that's, you know, that's a hundred thousand dollars. Um, but that's out of the way, that's a step that's out of the way. So, um, and we still have to, we, we retain the results of that soil, soil bring analysis. So, uh, but you can see, you know, basically, basically the, the yellow on here, um, if you look at the chart is, you know, basically the faces of, you know, coming up, getting to the point where you have very detailed blueprints where you can build a building. Um, the blue are the, the blue rectangles are different points at which you, you look at the costs. And so that, that red square down there, it says GMP. That's guaranteed maximum price. So that's the point. So we, we have Beckenhour, who's our, currently our hired, uh, construction manager at Risk. So that's the point where they say, yep, you know, they looked at all blueprints, they looked at everything, they say, yeah, this is the maximum price that it's going to cost. And then if they go over, that's the construction manager's responsibility. If they go under, which they have to, to, to do, you know, to keep it on, and they're working in another county in the state, they're doing well. So, so it looks like, you know, we made a good choice with that, with that particular construction manager. So anyway, that, that gives people an idea. If you have questions, and again, fellow commissioners, I'll get you, or email this to you or get you a copy of that. So, and it's very, and I have to emphasize, you can see big letters, it's draft. I want to emphasize that. So, so things.
One thing on there I can read.
So, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Gable. There any other, uh, new business?
I don't know about, uh, we need to talk about meetings, did we?
Oh, no, I passed over that.
The only one I have is on the eighteenth, which would be Monday before our next meeting is planning and zoning, but that.
Automatic, yeah.
And three of us are going to the Sioux Valley tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow, Sioux Valley. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, let's move down to twenty seven is the open. It's, we're open for public comment. There is none, we'll move down to commissioner comments.
I, I'd make a comment just to, uh, rest a little bit. Yesterday was Veterans Day and I hope that everybody attended an event that would make us take a moment and recognize the veterans. And I had a really fun experience. I went to Brookings and I put on a veterans program for a grade school in Brookings and with first and second graders. And I forgot how much fun they are. I had a good time and the teacher had to shut me down, so. I like that. If you have any questions, then everybody's hands up, you know. Lot of fun.
That's great.
I saw a few of you on at the Extension Center at the event out there and that went well. What I really liked about it, it was about a half hour program. It was short and sweet, so. Thank you, veterans.
Yes, thank you. We thank you. We are thankful for our freedoms in this country. Okay, if there's no further commissioner comments, uh, we do have a need for executive session under, uh, number one.
Make a motion to approve executive session.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Waterman. Oh, second by Gable, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move into executive.
Any action following the executive session? No action.